Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get our report from you for regarding our close session.
Happy to give our close session report, Madam Mayor. The council was briefed on item A and discussed it, but no reportable action was taken this evening. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and adjourn our special meeting. He's gonna read, okay. Okay, I don't have an agenda. I think I don't have an agenda. Where's mine?
I got it.
Let me just throw it in.
Are you busy with your phone?
No.
Okay, I did too.
Good evening, everyone. I want to go ahead and call to order the city council meeting, our regular meeting for December 3rd, 2019. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. Sorry, I have way too many papers in front of me. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and first start off with our invocation. We have Pastor Darryl Kelty from Community of Christ Church at 9468 Broadway. And please remain standing. We, after the invocation, we will have a couple of our Boy Scouts lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you.
Please stand.
Our heavenly Creator, who is a source of all things good, we, a few of your children would come into your presence this day to ask that we might tap into your Spirit, that we might open our minds and our hearts and our lives to that same Spirit. We do that in all humility, that we, for that, we're about to do, to conduct the business. This is the City of Temple City. We might do so for the betterment of all in the community. We would pray also for all of the staff, that they might have the wisdom to do their individual tasks with diligence, that they would make, to be able to make Temple City a better place, a place to be proud of. And finally, for all this audience here gathered, that they too, through their individual and corporate efforts, will leave this city a better place for the future generations to come. Thus, we say thank you and amen.
Amen.
Come forward. Detail, word mark. Detail, halt. Those non-uniformed, please place your right hand on the feet of God. Salute. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Detail about face. Detail, word mark. Is he seated? Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we're gonna be going ahead and move on to item five ceremonial matters. We have our Temple City Library Bookmark Contest winners. I'd like to go ahead and introduce Mylin Hamilton. She is the Children's Librarian to give us a brief introduction.
Hello. So, tonight, we have the winners of our LA County's 40th Annual Bookmark Contest. We challenge parents, educators, and librarians to introduce children to great reads and nurture their love of reading and the library with this contest and many other programs offered at our libraries throughout the year. We are proud to continue to offer this contest in partnership with our co-sponsor, Pentel of America Limited. It takes many hours of reading practice to achieve a goal of becoming a lifelong independent reader, and it's almost impossible for anyone to read that much without first developing a love of books and reading. This doesn't happen by itself. Someone has taken the time to show their own love for books and reading with these children. Parents help their children master reading by sharing reading with them. They are well on their way to sharing the love of reading and helping others become excited about books. We congratulate families everywhere for dedicating themselves to this. This contest is a challenge to parents, caregivers, and educators to use their imaginations and sense of wonder and curiosity and share reading together. The love of books and reading has served as a source of inspiration for our contest participants, who have shared their thoughts and feelings through their designs, and with their love for books and reading has come a respect for and understanding of the need for reading in our lives. These children have discovered the Temple City Library is the place where they can improve their literacy skills and where they can find information. Students can find books and other library materials, which help them with their homework assignments, answer questions about their world, and send their imagination soaring. So, tonight, we have one winner and one honorary mention for each of our grade categories of kindergarten through second grade, third through fifth grade, sixth through eighth grade, and ninth through 12th grade. The winners of each category will go on to compete in our county district-wide competition, where the grand prize winners will be selected by Supervisor Catherine Barger. Tonight, we invite you to honor our contest winners, not only for their artistic skills and creativity, but also for their appreciation of books and reading. And if you would like to see those winners, we have them displayed and all of our entries displayed at the library right now.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite council to come up. We have some certificates for the winners. I saw one that was a little crazy. Okay. First, let me just read this. All of them say the same thing. Certificate of recognition presented on behalf of the citizens of Temple City. Kindergarten through second grade category. Congratulations on your achievements as the winner of the kindergarten through second grade category of the 2019 Temple City Library Bookmark Contest. Your love of books and reading is visible through your artwork. May it be an inspiration to others. So, the first one we have is a Zhen Yu Quan. Zhen Yu Quan. Carissa Lee. Michelle So. Maria Asuquiera. Is that close? Charlie Heng? Charlie?
Kylie.
Kylie, Harley, I'm sorry. Carrie Chin? We have that one, uh-oh. And how do you say this again? Anna Asuquiera.
Anya.
The sister. Okay, next, who would like the library staff to come up?
All of you.
All of you, all of the library staff, please come up. Yes. Okay, next, I would like to introduce from the U.S. Census, Daniel Lee.
Yes, hi. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the mayor for inviting me, as well as city manager, and also Peggy, as well as, I'd like to give a shout-out to Temple City Chamber of Commerce, who has been assisting me. Peter Choi is not here today, but he has been a great help with the efforts with the census, as well as the librarian, Ms. Hamilton, who was just up here. Thank you so much. And also with the Unified School District in Temple City, as well as the superintendent, who has also been helping us with this enormous effort. Hello, everyone. My name is Daniel Lee. I'm a U.S. Census Partnership Specialist. My role is to go out into the community, into localities like yourself, to introduce what the census is about and to partner with you in order to reach as many people as possible. The census motto is very simple. It's to count everyone once, only once, and in the right place. So, why do we need a census? It's basically written in the Constitution. Article 1, Section 2 of our Constitution mandates that we have an actual enumeration, which will take place every 10 years. And this has been going on since the year 1790. So, there is nothing new. This has been going on as a tradition here in the United States. Second of all, the census is very, very important because there is a lot of federal funding at stake. $675 billion, to be specific, which is actually a very conservative number right now. This is money that will go back to our communities. It'll go to fix our roads. It'll be funding for our schools, school supplies, free lunch programs. It'll go to senior centers, our libraries. It'll help to fund homeless shelters. It will go to funding social and public services, such as Medicare, Social Security, retirement benefits, and so much more. The more accurate the population count, the more money that will return to our communities. So, that's why it's so important. The other reason that the census is so important is that it will determine the apportionment of the number of congressional seats for each state. As we know, Congress determines the laws of the land here in the U.S. The number of congressional seats are basically tied to the population count of the census. So, the higher the population count, the more seats that we, in California, can receive. As a point of reference, Texas, in 2010, in the previous census, received four additional congressional seats. The state of New York lost two seats. So, something to think about. California, we stayed the same, at 53 seats. So, it remains to be seen what will happen in this next upcoming 2020 census. Also, we have redistricting at stake. As we know, every 10 years, we will redefine our boundaries, our localities, our area codes, school districts, even our voting precincts will be affected by how accurate our population count will be. So, the more accurate the count, you know, the more predictable we'll be able to send our children to the schools that are near to us and not, you know, send our children to the other side of town. And also, the census is a part of our civic duty. If you are, for instance, a U.S. citizen, you have the right to vote in our presidential elections. With the census, the beauty of it is that anyone, if, whether you are a citizen, a non-citizen, whether you are homeless, whether you are undocumented, whether you are a young student, a young child, a senior, anyone can participate in this census. And it is a great portion and a great participation in our, contributing to our democracy. Because the census is so important and because the accurate population count will determine our future, it'll determine the future of the next 10 years of our localities. The census will be easier to take than ever in 2020. Starting from March 12th, you will be getting a postcard in the mail. There will be a specific code attached to that postcard from the U.S. Census Bureau. You can plug in that code into a website link that will be demarked on the postcard, and you can take the census online. It'll be a very simple census questionnaire this time. It'll only be comprised of nine questions, and it won't be as complicated as the 2010 census, which I think was close to around 40 questions or so. The census will also be available by phone, and it'll also be available in traditional paper format. But the official postcards will start to be sent by March 12th, and will continue on till the end of April, where we'll send follow-up reminders.
So, Mr. Lee, quick question.
Yes.
You must receive a postcard to respond, because so respond. Can people just respond to it and get on the website or something?
So, the postcard is tied to the address, so it makes it more official. There are addresses maybe, you know, we might have missed out on, but you can also take the census online through the website. And actually, you don't actually need the code itself to confirm that you reside there. So, there will be other methods for you to access.
Even if people don't receive the postcard?
Yes, alright.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said that you can do it through, on the telephone.
Yes.
Is that you calling in or them calling you?
You'll be calling in, right. The census is strictly protected by Title 13. The data is strictly confidential. Results are reported only in statistical format only. We do not share any of this census information with any of the government agencies. That includes ICE, that includes the DHS, that includes the FBI, CIA. No one can actually touch this information, because we are a separate federal agency. Census employees, we swear a lifetime oath to protect respondents' information. And if there's any wrongful disclosure or leakage of this information, we could be imprisoned up to five years or face a fine of up to $250,000 or both. This will be the most diverse linguistically in terms of reaching out to non-English languages. We have 12 versions of this available online. That's the online version, as well as by phone. 12 non-English languages. The printed versions that will come to you by mail, if the online versions are not completed, will actually be available in English and in Spanish only. If those languages do not suffice, then we will also have 59 non-English language glossaries that our enumerators can provide as well. We're also looking into efforts with Los Angeles County and the region here to partner with our localities, and we're also hiring people in the community to assist us with language barriers. Key dates for response, I mentioned March 12th to March 3rd. That's when the official invitations on the postcards will be sent out to respond to the census online. April 1st is actually considered Census Day. So, it's not gonna be April Fool's Day. It's actually gonna be Census Day. If you could put, mark that on your calendars. So, that is the official day that we start to compile and start to count the data that is being received. And starting from April 8th to 27th, we'll be sending reminder cards, questionnaires by paper as well. And this will continue on until the end of July 31st, where you will be able to respond. And subsequently, after about May or so, if we do not get a response, that's when we'll be sending in enumerators that will be going door-to-door, knocking to make sure we have all the information filled out. I don't know if you can see this map very well. This is actually a map of Temple City. It's kind of centered there. The darker shaded areas are actually the places in 2010 where we had an undercount. And an undercount means any areas that had a 30% non-response rate or above. Temple City actually didn't do too bad in 2010, but however, that's, you know, data from 10 years ago. As we know, 10 years later, we have a huge demographic change here in not just Temple City, but in, you know, all of California. So, it is absolutely critical that we don't, you know, lay down our guards. We actually go out and talk to our community about taking the census. This is statistics in schools. This is more for the school board, but the census has, is providing a program where you can incorporate the census data into everyday school programs, even programs such as history courses that involve mathematics. It's a great tool that can be used for our children, since we do have children in the audience. And it's all, basically, it's all available on the website. But this is probably the most important point that I would like to make with the cities, especially Temple City. We would like to form a CCC with you, which is called a Complete Count Committee. I know in 2010, the city had a Complete Count Committee for the census. It's basically a, just a group designates a leader, such as a mayor or a head, comprised of members of local governments, faith-based organizations, members of the media, members of the school, any business associations. They come together, and they basically find ways where they can promote the census voluntarily for their own communities. CCC is Bring Structured Unified Outreach Communication to their communities. And basically, it's up to you how you want to run the CCC and how you would like to incorporate the census data and the promotional materials that we can provide to your communities. The census is also hiring very aggressively right now for the upcoming 2020 year. We have flexible jobs, hours, flexible pay. We have paid training. Another assistance that we need from cities and localities like yourselves is we need training space for our enumerators and for other employees that will be trained as they are being hired. So, if you can help us, that'd be great. Couple points I'd like to mention. In 2010, one of the most undercounted communities happened to be the multi-ethnic communities, as well as children that were five years of age and younger. It was estimated in the entire United States, 1 million children were actually left out in the census data in 2010. So, that means, you know, 1 million of our children were raised for the 10, the next 10 years without adequate federal funding. So, again, this is, we're taking this very seriously with the U.S. Census Bureau. Any assistance that you can give to us, that'd be greatly appreciated. If you could volunteer, volunteer to activate the communities with the census, it would be also very helpful. Members of the community, if you are part of any associations, if you are part of PTAs, school boards, if you are part of any churches, any nonprofits, those would also be very helpful in order for us to reach as many people as possible. So, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
I do have one, Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Lee, so, it's a sort of a general knowledge question. For households that don't respond, you said 30% of the household didn't respond.
Sure.
How do you treat those households? Do you treat them as they're vacant, or do you apply something to count for some of them being lived in? What do you guys?
So, each, so every 10 years, we do a count of the homes that are available in a district. So, if there's, if there's a structure that's there, that's a residential structure, then we count those as viable homes where we can send out postcards. If those postcards are not returned to us, or if there is no count from that residency, then that is considered a non-counted residency.
So, they're just totally not counted?
Yes, correct.
So, when you said 30% of the household in Temple City not responding, that means we're unaccounted?
So, Temple City actually did pretty well.
Pretty well.
Yes, so I think the probably lowest count in some of the areas was around 25, maybe maximum 23, 25%. But some of the other surrounding areas in Temple City, such as El Monte, South El Monte, even Monrovia, cities such as Monrovia, had a very low count. So, a large undercount, I should say. That's more accurate. But Temple City didn't do too bad in 2010, but that's why I'm stressing the temperature.
So, what's the percentage that didn't respond again?
It's around the 20% mark, depending on the type, the area. You saw the shaded areas. Even Temple City, within the locality, we had different shades of blue.
The darkest shades, you said 30%.
The darker shades are the ones that have higher undercounted populations.
That means a lot of us were not accounted for.
Yes, it could be. So, we need to get them counted. Yes, any other questions?
I've recently heard that in the San Gabriel Valley that we'd possibly be losing two congressional seats
Okay.
in the next four years or four years from now. Was that probably due to being unaccounted in this area?
Yes, so I do know some of the other localities, like LA County, probably San Diego as well, they're running their own numbers using our census data. As the U.S. Census Bureau representative, we can't really speculate on, you know, how many seats we may gain or lose. We can just state the facts that, you know, the more accurate the population count, you know, the better our numbers for congressional seats. So, if a city like such as San Diego are bringing up those numbers, they might have used the census data among themselves to run regression models and to see that, you know, if you have an undercount of this percentage, then we might actually lose, you know, these seats, or those seats might go to a different state, because it's an apportionment. So, yes, our duty as, you know, specialists at partners is to go out and make sure everyone is accurately counted, so that, you know, we hopefully don't lose any seats. But yes, there is a possibility that could happen if we do have an undercount in 2020.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Daniel. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Oh, sorry, hold on one second.
I actually have one more question, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Lee, we have one more question for you, sorry.
In an area such as Temple City, which is sort of a multi-ethnic cities, do you guys advertise in local papers or Spanish, Chinese, or whatever language?
Yes, so for now, the local paper that I've reached out to has been The Chamber. Peter Choi has been very gracious to allow us to send an article in, submit an article for this month, actually, in The Temple City Life. But apart from that, I'm not sure if any other locals, for instance, of Mandarin, maybe newspapers have been reached out to yet. But I'd be happy to reach out to them and connect them with our media team.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that a lot of people folks read World Journal. They don't necessarily read The Temple City, The Chamber paper.
Sure, so yes, multilingual outlets such as the media would definitely help. We have a huge Mandarin-speaking community here. They definitely need to be reached out to. And so, our specialists, we do have Mandarin speakers that could probably assist with that. I myself, actually, I'm Korean. I speak the Korean language. But yes, we do have teams that can assist with languages such as that, so.
Well, let us get you that information. We can get you that information, that contact information.
Yes, that would definitely help, yes.
So, if you can share it.
Great, yeah. Some other ideas, I was with the city of Lindora. They offered us to run one of our YouTube videos on their cable TV website, sorry, cable TV program. They also, let's see, Flithill Transit, they agreed to promote the census banners inside of their, you know, buses. So, they can get really creative. It's really up to how much the city can provide, how much.
Banners, let's say, for Main Street?
Yes, that would be excellent.
Would you consider, say, I mean, like in February, we have a community festival here, it's a pretty big event.
Sure.
Would you guys consider perhaps having, hosting a booth or having some people out here?
Yes, we also table for booths. Actually, this coming Friday, we have the Temple City Lights Festival, and we'll be having a table there. So, those are all very good options and outlets for us as well. But if you have any other suggestions and ways we can, especially reach the Mandarin or Hispanic communities, that would help. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item six, public comments. I have a few. First, I'd like to introduce Helen Shaw.
So, good evening, Mayor, city council, city manager, and city staff. I'm Helen Romero-Shaw. I'm the Public Affairs Manager for the West San Gabriel Valley for the Southern California Gas Company. So, Temple City is one of the cities that I work with, and I'm the liaison. The reason I'm here today is I would like the city council to please consider adopting a balanced energy resolution. So, balanced energy means that all variety of energy should be available to the citizens here in Temple City. I'm not, we're finding out that the regular citizens do not know that there's laws that were passed and state policymakers that are just promoting electrification of the whole state of California with the goal of eliminating natural gas. The reason that I'm here is I want the city and the citizens to know this. We are a company that's been around for 150 years. We've been We've been delivering natural gas to 22 million customers, starting in Visalia, to the Mexican border. And of the, in that territory, we have 90% of the residents use natural gas. They use it to cook, they use it to keep warm, they use it for water heating, and they use it to dry clothes. Now, the reason this electrification came about is because environmental rules and regulations. And the gas company is very supportive of environmental policy, and that's why we are starting to buy renewable natural gas. And renewable natural gas is methane. The component of natural gas is primarily methane. And we, and we capture the methane, well, actually, other companies that are in that field capture the methane from dairies, agriculture, and waste treatment plants, municipal streams, capture it before it goes up in the air, and put it into the pipeline, and it mixes very well with the classic, traditional natural gas. So that's how we're supporting this. Now, there's reasons why a resolution like this should be important to the City Council and to the citizens of Temple City. First of all, it's energy choice. It's up to the constituent, the customer, to decide what energy they want to use in their home. Second of all, the businesses. It's up to the business to decide what they want, or actually, they need. For instance, restaurants need natural gas, in many cases, to produce a product, produce their food, the way their customers want it. The other is affordability. We hear it all the time, that the gas company bill is their lowest bill. And, and we're very cognizant of our customers that are in fixed incomes, many of them are elderly, they're working families. So keeping utility bills down is very important to them. Reliability, you don't have to worry about outages when it comes to natural gas. And we've seen a lot of how Mother Nature has been rough in, in certain areas here in Southern California. And so, so natural gas is reliable, so you can depend on it. As a matter of fact, 45% of the electric plants and electric generators actually run a natural gas. So, so even electricity needs to be, needs to use natural gas to be able to be available to, to their customers, to the electric customers. So, I see my time is getting down, so I wanted to tell you that the other issue about the resolution is for the city of Temple City to show that they are for local control. I'm aware from the other cities that I, that I work with, that one of the issues that come up is the cities are always given mandates that come from Sacramento, and they're never consulted as to if that's really good, whatever they decide on, whatever legislation or policy, is that really good for our city? Is that what our customers want? So 111 cities have already passed resolutions. It is not taking sides, let's just have a variety of, of energy. It can be natural gas, it can be electricity, it can wind, solar, and, and just take a position, and that's my request. By the way, Arcadia, San Gabriel, and Alhambra have already passed resolutions. So that is my request, and I'm hoping that you can put this on the City Council agenda at your next meeting. Thank you so much, appreciate your attention.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have some materials.
Please. Thank you, Helen. Okay, next I have Michael John something. I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Martinez?
Martinez? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Okay. Go right ahead.
Well, good evening, Mayor, Councilmember, City Manager. Just want to speak as a citizen. Been a citizen of Temple City for close to 50 years. And just kind of piggyback on what Helen says, it's a matter of choice. We all like to have choices, and just to have something imposed on us really kind of, you know, has always kind of disturbed me a little bit. Well, we always, I remember some of the natural disasters we had, earthquakes, Silmar, was when we first moved here, and then Northridge, and Whittier, and then the windstorms that we've had. And during those times, we've had power outages. But the one thing that remained constant was our natural gas. I still had hot water to take a hot shower with, I still had gas to cook, still had to heat my home. So it was nice, you know, it was kind of like in a little bubble. Financially, it's my cheapest bill. It's cheaper than my satellite, cheaper than my electricity, cheaper than my water. And like, even in the wintertime, at the peak time, it's still the cheapest, but most importantly, it's, it's the most reliable. So I really hope that, you know, you heed Helen's advice, encourage you to adopt the measure. And like I said, we all like choices. And to my, it's not really a battle of either or, it's both. You know, it's like how we diversify our money, right? We don't want to put all our eggs in one basket. It's the same thing with our energy. And we can accomplish the goal that California wants, and we can be a contributing factor to that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Oh, hold on, hold on one second, Mr. Martinez, we have a question.
Either you or Helen can answer, but are, are these resolutions being sent individually? Are you waiting for a certain period of time in sending them en masse, or what, what is the process with the resolutions?
Okay, we've been collecting them for the last year, and we have an application before the California Public Utilities Commission to let us buy renewable natural gas and bring it to the homes and to the businesses. We want to use these resolutions as an indication that, yes, there are 100, over 100 cities that really want the ability to provide the power that their constituents want. So, so the sooner the better, because we're, we are going to bundle these up and present it to the California Public Utilities Commission. And that's the regulatory body that oversees the gas company.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next I have Mr. Steve Stafford.
Mayor Fish, Mayor Protem Chavez, councilmembers, city staff. Yesterday, I saw something in Seventh Avenue Adventist Church's parking lot. Lo and behold, it's a coyote. And that's the furthest I've seen coyotes come down. And that concerns me, because a lot of us have animals, and they will attack an animal. The second thing I've noticed, the homeless situation is kind of rocketed back up a bit all of a sudden in the last two or three weeks. And prior to that, they've had a lot of, of what they call warming fires get out of control. And it takes a lot of fire resources, it taxes the system. I spotted something last night and reported it, and one homeless person got arrested for arson because of the fire that he started, and it got out of control, it took multiple resources. Thing I want to say is, what concerns me is seeing these coyotes. I'm glad we took the action, we did a couple councilmember, council sessions ago, because it's very important. These coyotes are very resourceful, they know how to come out of the brush and find their way down to where they want to go. It amazed me. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I'm going to go ahead and close public comments, move on to item seven, consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed from the discussion.
Motion to approve. Mayor Fish, just need to pull for, in the city attorney, pull item C, just for a couple clarification points.
Okay.
Motion to approve other than item C.
One second.
Okay, can I get a roll call for this, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, unrelated to this item, Mr. Murphy will point out a couple things. One, change to the existing agreement, and he'll explain that change, and something that's going to be coming back to you at a future meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. The county, county real estate department has reviewed the agreement after it had gone back and forth between the city and the county libraries. The real estate department had two requests for us. The first, county by statute has to give a 60-day notice to a city clerk when they are going to acquire, by lease or purchase, or sell, or do construction on a property within a city. For whatever reason, they didn't give that notice. Again, by law, by statute, we can waive the notice, but it has to be done by resolution. So we're going to put a resolution on your next consent calendar. We have no problem with the waiving of the notice. After all, we've known about this for more than 60 days, we're the ones negotiating it. So we're happy to do it, happy to help them out and make their files complete. Second thing they asked us to do was to take out section nine of the agreement, which deals with taxes. This is a fairly standard lease form, and when a private entity leases property from us, that private entity pays what's called possessory use tax. We, as a public entity, don't pay tax on the property, but if it's being used for a commercial enterprise, they pay taxes. The county said, or asked, to avoid any confusion, that we take the section out. I've reviewed the request, I'm perfectly fine with it, and so I would ask you to adopt staff's recommendation with the elimination of section nine. And then, as I've said, we'll be back in two weeks with that resolution for your adoption on a consent agenda.
So, section nine has to do with the if there's taxes.
If there's taxes.
So if we take that section out, if there are taxes, who's going to pay for them?
If there were taxes, the city would, because the city's the owner. But as we know, there, there will not be at this.
Okay, so that's why we're comfortable with that?
Yes, sir.
There isn't going to be taxes.
Correct.
Just want to make sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve consent item, are we bringing this back, or we?
No, no, no.
Okay, so motion to approve item C on the consent calendar.
Second. Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Okay, moving on to public hearing, item A, second reading and adoption of ordinance number 191037, amending Title VII by adopting by reference the 2020 Los Angeles County Building Code, Title 26, Electrical Code, Title 27, Plumbing Code, Title 28, Mechanical Code, Title 29, Residential Code, Title 30, Existing Building Code, Title 33, 2019 California Green Building Standards Code, and 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code with certain amendments, additions, and deletions.
Mayor Fish, interim community development director, Reamer, will give a very, very brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As a reminder, you had a full presentation on this back on November 19th. For the members of the public, I'll just summarize very quickly. The International Code Council develops a set of building codes, which are then translated into the California Building Code. The California Code says we need to adopt a building code. Most jurisdictions in LA County end up adopting the LA County Building Code, which is based on the California Building Code. We have adopted the LA County Building Code in the past, and we recommend adopting the LA County Building Code tonight. So if you agree, our, our recommendation is to read by title only and await further reading and adopt this ordinance, which would adopt the necessary building codes.
Does council have any comments? Okay, I'd like to go ahead and open public comments, close public comments. Any additional council questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we read by title only and await further reading and adopt ordinance 19-1037, adopting by reference and amending that 2020, LA County Building, Electrical, Plumbing, Mechanical, Residential, Existing Building Code, 2019 California Green Building Standard Code, and the 2018 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
Thank you.
One second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. And I won't have to read that again, right? Okay, good.
Ditto.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item nine, unfinished business. We have none. New business, we have none. Update from City Manager.
Mayor Fish, very quick, members of the council, very quickly, lights on Temple City this coming Friday, 5 o'clock. Weather looks good. We were prepared for alternatives and maybe even a cancellation, but looks like we'll be okay. They'll see, you'll see some new color up and down Las Tunas, and take a drive out in front of City Hall this evening, you'll see part of what's going to be lit up as part of City Hall as well, so a few little decorations as part of the holiday season.
I see that Steve left, unfortunately, but I'm assuming we'll get some instructions about Friday.
Yes, you'll have, you'll have some instructions by, by tomorrow.
All right, no rush.
Audit committee will be meeting hopefully sometime in December, where there's a few new requirements that are coming from the state, from, excuse me, from the state, from the GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, related to pensions. As you know, the state auditor done some work throughout California, and we held up pretty well on that front. Auditors do their work to ensure that we are doing our job as staff, and abiding by what your direction is, and having the proper internal controls. Things are looking good on the audit front, but we will be reporting to the Audit Committee, which is councilmembers, Councilmember Yu and Mayor Protem Chavez, before the end of the year. That'll do it.
Thank you.
Mayor Fish, thank you.
Thank you. Update from City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Very briefly, we've been working with your staff to summarize some of the key legislation that was passed in Sacramento this year. That report will come, Mr. Hallworth and I will sort of jointly tag-team that report, either at your next meeting or at the first meeting in January, along with a few recommendations, or really more, again, just information about changes to your ordinances that will be coming up in the first part of the year to reflect what we need to change.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 13, council reports regarding ad hocks or standing committee meetings. Do we have any?
No.
Brian, are there any of these that we need to dissolve? Or is everything, is everything good?
At your last meeting, you dissolved the ones that you needed to resolve, dissolve, resolve, dissolve, Mayor Fish?
Get rid of it.
Okay, get rid of it.
Well, is it there as a standing now?
Yeah, that was the, that was the difference, because we switched all of them. There are no more ad hocks anymore.
Okay.
I think we need one.
Yep, remember, that was a, that was a pet peeve of Eric's, remember? He didn't like ad hocks.
No, let's not, let's not.
Well, we had them on for quite a while, understandably.
It seemed like we had an ad hoc every week.
It just seemed like that.
Okay, go ahead. Moving on to item 14, council items separate from the City Manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Mann?
Thank you, Mayor Fish. I don't have much, I'm just looking forward to lights on Temple City. I'm glad the weather is cooperating, so.
You'll feel better by then.
Yeah, 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 it's just, this thing that's going around.
Stay warm, yeah.
Definitely, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Sternquist?
A couple of things, let me put my glasses on. Just wanted to remind everyone to start writing your letters to Santa. We will have our Santa mailbox out again this year, and Santa's elves will be there. So if you've been naughty or nice, or you've even tried to be either one of those, come out and write your letter to Santa.
Where's that going to be?
In the park.
It'll be, it'll be as part of.
It was at City Hall last year.
It was after, then you can come and drop them off.
Yeah, so there's going to be a booth out at Lights on Temple City.
Yeah, it's, it's just the neatest thing. So we'll have Santa helpers there to help the children write the letters if they're too young to write it themselves. Also, I wanted to ask if possibly we could have an ad hoc, or we could... Also, I wanted to ask if possibly we could have an ad hoc, or we could have a study session on the Chamber property. I know we're entering a lease, and that would be possibly for the term of the library renovation. I would hope that when the library renovation is complete, that we also have something ready to go in the Chamber property. So I don't know if that would even possibly, council would like to have community input, maybe do, I don't know, like a mini meeting regarding that and getting some input, possibly starting with an ad hoc, I don't know. But I think it would be wise for us to, to start and have at least, get some ideas as to what the community and what the council see there. Instead of 18 months from now, or from the library being completed, we have an empty Chamber building with nothing ready. So if we, I don't know how you would like to go, Mayor, but it's up to you.
Brian?
We were kind of planning on doing a study session first, and seeing where that would go.
Do we have a date?
I don't have a date for a study session yet.
So if we could do that.
Could we have it in January?
Or even when, right after the library kickoff or ground breaking? If we could, I'm hoping it's.
That's next summer, right, huh?
No, that's.
I think we could, we could do something in February easily.
Okay. I think on that schedule, it's much sooner, isn't it? Tom?
For the library, the groundbreaking?
To start demolition.
I thought it was towards the beginning of summer.
No, no, no. It's either January or February.
February, so they're going to the bid, they're going to the bid protest period right now with the, with the library, so hopefully they will be awarding a bid end of, end of December, early January. So we're, our plan, and we've told the Camellia Festival, and we'll let everybody else expect everything, not using the library, probably in the lot in February and January as well.
And that's pretty much it. Looking forward to Lights on Temple City. I know that's one of all of our favorite fun events, because families get to come out, and we celebrate the kickoff of the Christmas sale, as, sale, that's what's on my mind, of the Christmas, the Christmas season as a community. And it, it just, honestly, that night, I feel like we could be the Hallmark movie of the year. So please come out and have hot chocolate and cookies, the city provides that for everyone. So looking forward to it.
Thank you. Councilmember Yu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too am looking forward to the Lights on Temple City, but I wanted to thank Mr. Lee for coming out and talking about the U.S. Census. It's kind of alarming, actually, to hear it will indeed in certain precincts, that 20% or 30, even 30% accounted. And that means that, because some of our funding definitely depends on population, that means that we are being short-changed, at least with those funding, about 20 to 30%. And we always talk about how we increase revenue and cut our expenses, and this is definitely, in my mind, perhaps is a low-hanging fruit, if we can do a better job. So I guess the city manager perhaps would help us think of some strategy to do a better job.
Well, I think Vincent's idea of putting up a banner, if we can get that in the works, Brian, to, after the Camellia Festival, because I know we put that one up, but.
Who pays for all this stuff? Do we pay for this, or does the federal government pay for this?
On the outreach, on the outreach.
If we're going to do a banner, somebody's got to pay for it.
On the outreach side, it would be us. There is efforts by the county to do some outreach efforts.
Don't they have a budget to provide some help with that?
There is, there is a budget, most cities have, but it's, that portion is minimal. So we, it would be us that would be essentially.
And then the driving force behind that is by spending money ourselves, hopefully at the end somewhere where there's a good count, we'll get money back.
Yes.
I'm assuming.
Yes.
That's the incentive.
Absolutely. Having an accurate count is good for all of us.
Yeah, okay.
We did.
I'm sure there's things that we can come up with, between mail and letter.
Mayor Protem?
Other than, remember, we'll have snow on Friday. So that'll be fun. Should be cold, no rain, but cold.
No rain.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay. I have just a few things. Of course, the parade, it's always an excellent, excellent time to come and celebrate our town. Also, we're having, again, our holiday decorating home contest, so.
And businesses.
And businesses. Please let us know. You can contact our Parks and Recreation Department. We would love to go out and look at your house. That'd be wonderful. Regarding the census, Brian, if you could make sure that they have our contact list as far as all of our, our Chinese newspapers, everything.
Yep, we'll reach out a little further.
Awesome.
And we went through the process before Mr. Forbes, before he had left, went through what's called a LUCA review, which is verifying every single address in the city that we know, all of our new construction and everything else. So that goes through a process, that's a planning and a process that goes through. So we've done, there's been the backend work of that beforehand as well. And Mr. Reamers is making sure, as interim director as well, if there's any other follow-up with the LUCA activity, or the LUCA reviews, we'll be doing that as well. But they've already gone through all those steps already as well. But now, it's the other kind of, little more softer and intangible stuff that we'll kind of do, that we can, we can help with. So the technical side, the technical side, we've gone through, and we, and we, and the city's already participated in that, but we'll make sure we do. And Eliot, Ms. Flores, and Ms. Avery on our staff on our side, in the city manager's office, will be tasked with being a couple of our in-house liaisons to assist.
Okay, and can you also make sure that social media is contacted?
Yep.
All of our Facebook, I know we have, I don't do half those things, but Twitter and everything.
Yep, and perhaps, like Athens would be agreeable in putting that extra sheet in there, Bill?
Well, you know.
I don't know.
Councilmember Sternquist brought up something at our last meeting, that we don't use the, and I don't know what it's called, the robo-call.
Reverse 911?
No, the robo-call.
Yeah, the reverse 911 call.
Do we ever use that? I mean, I don't, can't even remember the last time.
We need to do a presentation, because there's a, we've, it's, it's a newer system that provides, with Everbridge, which is Nixal, but it's Nixal by another name.
Okay.
That has some different capabilities. So we, we, we need to probably present that to the council and talk to them, talk to you about what those capabilities are.
Can we do that soon? Because I really think that there's an opportunity to let our residents know of quite a few things. I think the last time I got something was because of the Camellia Parade. I really don't remember. Street closures and things.
I still think it's important to let people know about, if we relax the parking, we're not relaxing the rules for street parking, and make it quite clear.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Wait, wait, I thought we were talking about census.
We're talking about census. We went from one thing to another. Calm down, everyone, calm down. Okay, additional public comments?
Jerry's got the answers.
He does, he's going to tell us all now.
Oh, it was because of City Connect, that's why, to use that.
No, I have no answers, but I do have a question. Could we sometime in the future get an update on the Primrose Park? If the grant was approved, when it's going to be approved, how much?
Actually, I don't think we're hearing until January, is that correct?
Actually, we're not going to be hearing until March. We met with, we met with the state about a month and a half ago, or a month ago, or they did a site visit. And they, they, at that point, they informed us that they will not be letting applicants know until March of 2020.
Okay.
But we, but we will be bringing forward to you so that we can keep the ball rolling.
In January?
On that, we'll be coming back in January to talk, just to finalize some things, so we can either have kind of like a base bid idea alternate, so that we can kind of get things rolling forward.
Brian, is there anyone we can talk to, to lobby for us, for this, the funding for this park? I mean, who, who is this committee, or who is making this decision? I know we say the state, but who is it?
Yeah, so it, it's the, the name of the department is escaping me at the moment, but there is a department that's reviewing it. There's, I think there's 10 or 12 individuals who do site evaluations. I don't know what part, I'll, I'll, we'll go back and look, but there are pretty clear technical points that are made, you know, some things we can't get past. For example, there are socio-economic factors that are part of the scoring related to that grant, that so if you have poverty levels with this many census tracts, that gives you so many points, how park poor you are. So there's some intangible things.
Population counts.
Right, so population counts on those kinds of things. But I can, we can look and see where things are at.
Because having seen some of those applications, they're, let's just say, you know, if, if you, the squeaky, what is it, the squeaky wheel gets the oil?
Right.
I mean, I think if there's anything that we can do to use our legislators to help us, it doesn't hurt to reach out to them, because firstly, they, they influence, we all know that.
Yeah, they do. At a, at a park, I mean.
It's a park.
It's a park.
So I think anything you can do, I think if all of us would be willing to reach out to anyone that we know that are our contacts, the possibility would move that forward. I mean, it, it can't hurt us.
Will do. Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Good. Thank you for the conversation. If anything, they should give it to us, because we're park poor and nothing else.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
I agree. Thank you, Jerry. Okay, oh, go right ahead.
I'm back, I never left. Just didn't have anything, I didn't have anything to say before. But anyway, good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem Chavez, and council and staff. Just a little bit of piggybacking on to the balanced energy issue that was brought up. And for the sake of disclosure, I have worked for the gas company, but prior to working there, I worked on two power plants. And one of them was a harbor generating station, which is a very old one, over in Los Angeles, DWP plant. And they used to have what were called steam generators. And there, they used natural gas to basically fire the boilers, produce steam, and that would turn your turbine, which would produce your electricity. So what they did is they took those out, and they came out with a more efficient system, which is now a gas turbine. And we're all familiar with gas turbine engines, because if you've ever heard a jet plane, passenger plane going, and that's the exact same engine that they use. So now you're using the natural gas to fire that engine directly connected to the, to the generator, and that's how you produce your electricity, without having to lose heat to boiling water. And Pasadena Power did the exact same conversion several years ago, and the efficiency just really increased. And the other plant I worked on is the Southeast Resource Recovery Facility on Terminal Island. And that one, there's a cogeneration plant. What that means is they use fuel that they burn to produce the steam to turn the turbines. But there, they're burning trash, basically, is what they're doing. That's the cogeneration portion. And then to fire their incinerators, they use natural gas. Natural gas is used quite a bit. And recently, the city of Los Angeles was considering closing two gas-fired plants, and they decided not to, because they're still reliable and efficient, and always have power. So that's just my, you know, little input on there, is that these plants do use natural gas. And then to piggyback on one more item on our census, the address for the building is 5555 West Fifth Street. That's the gas company tower. So, kind of ironic that that would all tie together. And if you want to get there, you can get on the 78 bus going west, it'll take you right to there. So that's it for me for tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now, any additional public comments? Okay, hope to see everybody at the parade. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor.